Good, how've you been going so far?
Done, right?
So great.
So great.
So great.
I'm a little jealous, so it's been a thing they're looking up. It's gonna be again.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it should, let's see how it spreads out.
Oh, so this needs to watch.
I should have thought something, I'm sorry, no, nothing.
I could have grabbed something.
No, no, I have, no.
I'm gonna start on this, but I might. Do you want me to?
Well, this is for later.
Later?
Means for, meaning in October. Which one, this?
Uh, yeah, that's from the meeting we have at Hampton.
Yeah.
So it's not for today.
It, yeah.
It will be, right, but.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, lots of stuff.
I shut off all my defenses, I hope. Oh, we have one. Because I get, we met in September.
That's why.
It's totally used.
It makes sense, sure. Think that's a great idea.
Okay. Any responses?
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, yeah.
I need you to sign these documents.
Yeah, same. Just the order right now. I have to run to my car.
All right.
Is this what we're talking?
Yeah, same to me too. It's just a waiting for some things to. So, great period, we find, find that back.
I.
Number four. Roger and I.
Yeah, I'm going, I've had since I.
Okay.
I was gonna.
Looking at. An eyeball. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, probably have to redo this then if you're not gonna get it. For right now, we have to get Kim on there.
Thank you. Yellow.
I just had an eye in it, and so. And then we had the ones. For all these other stuff.
They just, yes.
That's okay, though.
And did it change a lot?
So you.
Like.
What are the names?
Put your sign, put your name on there. And then.
Those would be pretty.
It's good to sit right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've done red glasses.
Sure, that's one of them. That's a great idea.
I love her.
Do like, do I buy director?
Oh, my gosh, like so much.
Even, even if I get my insurance.
Well, I get my hundred, you know, it's off.
Nine twenty.
It's a lot.
They do scratch a little faster.
Yeah.
Do they?
Yeah, more.
This is the case.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
And we have Miss Oakley. Well, it's just fun, says they can't read without him.
But you don't worry.
And then you're right here.
I'll say.
I wish.
We're marvelous. Yeah. Okay, and then. Four years after here, this is the year. The last, the year.
Okay.
The, um, prophecy. Okay, great. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I don't really need.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay.
Well, because I did it in. I never, oh, never.
Well, I mean. I said, I said, I'm so kind of committed. Oh, all right.
All right, I'm gonna go to involve this meeting to order. Um, a reminder, we are on Zoom, so it's going to be recorded. Um, so additions or changes to the agenda. So we have those three, um, general housekeeping will be under unfinished business, good vibes under, I thought we'd do it at the end of branch reports. Okay, if that works, and then Maren's gonna do a kind of a squish, um, presentation of the collection management development. But we do. And that would be after my director report.
I think that's great.
Okay.
Let me approve that. Right. So I'm gonna have them.
Well, I don't, and you know, we're gonna. All right, minutes.
Really complicated, but I think they're accurate to the, all of the meetings.
Yeah, I think.
I think.
I'm actually looking over my phone once.
Oh, I move.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing?
Motion carries. All right, next is budget.
There was one big amount.
Oh, that does, I have a small question. I, I don't.
Oh, I know, there was.
Interest?
Yes.
And visa interest?
Yeah, so the, with the claim process, so you have to, I get the invoice and I type up the claim and we take it to Cheryl at the courthouse, and then it has to get the commissioner's signatures and go through, and we had, the credit card was breached in early June, which we didn't. They were able to take care of it, but then we had a, we had been getting the, um, invoices, um, sent electronically, well, when they got that switched around, then I didn't get it because you have to like return it on, so then we just had a.
Just a.
Yeah. Yeah.
A glitch.
And so it, it's, I have to go through so many steps and we had fixed it and it's moving forward, it should be fine, but that's what happened.
Thanks for explaining that.
Oh, my goodness. I think, I think it was. Yeah.
So was it under the, um, the three thousand two hundred and ten? Because that's the amount.
One hundred and sixty. Last page.
So that's.
Yeah.
For the elevator repair, that is also a three thousand dollar bill. Or not, because down here it's the annual fee that we have to pay.
Still, every time.
Yeah.
Just crazy. Um, I think I wondered about. Um. The propane for Geraldine was a hundred and twenty-six. Is that for, like, standard premium time?
Uh, yeah, I wanna say that's either, it's either quarterly or it's, you like use your whole thing and then they come and fill it back up or something, I mean, that's not a monthly.
No, it's not monthly. I know, I, I'm not sure, we might.
That's when it gets low.
Switching that to more local, because now I have a local.
Right, which Sammy, Sammy Joe suggested, and I just am not sure how to.
Right. About that. So. Well, I wanna, personally, I, you know, need to think about switching to, because it's always been.
Right.
Um, central Montana propane, which is probably what this was, so. And they come like quarterly. And I don't even think they come that much, I think it's like three times a year.
They come, remind you, when, when, like, you're like, you might be getting.
Right, when they.
I think they have, like, a way of.
Like at one time.
They do or something, so Sammy Joe did, uh, different.
He had a suggestion, I just haven't.
Okay, I'll touch base with her on that, I mean, put that on. Great. I mean, eventually. Eventually I try to help you.
I'm like. All right.
Thank you.
I switch.
Are you ready to? Make a motion on that? Or any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
In a second, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Reports.
Fifty-three percent of everybody.
Ah, so for, um, August, so remember that, this is for August, not for this month, but for last month. Um, Big Sandy themes, parties, go to the library, graphic novels and superheroes, they've been working on weeding and did not let me know of any needs or concerns at this time. Um, Forbidden themes, for Harvest Fair, for H, Artist for Pirates, horses, American artists, back to school, sunflowers, ancient civilizations, Reader's Choice, um, for YA dystopian and fantasy kingdoms. Projects included planning for programs for the school year, um, getting principal library launched, and we've started our People's, People for Periodicals drive. Geraldine themes, uh, children's themes, back to school, pirates, jellyfish, frogs and fireflies and rockets, and for the adults learning something new. Sammy Joe didn't have any projects at this time, um, I got her time cards that she requested and then still, uh, we need to get the shed ordered. So that's the same as last month, and I know changed, and a high wood. At this point, so then I thought if this was the time, would be, this would be the time Danny suggested, we had a good vibes. Um, then, I don't know if you wanna talk about that a little bit, we don't have, I mean.
No, this introduces it.
Great, I would love to introduce it, and then we can either vote on adding it to the agenda, or you guys can think about it, we can talk about it next time, or, um, how we wanna go forward, but my thought would be, um. This would be a ti- a part of the meeting that as board members, we can share something outstanding that we have noticed happen over the last month in our library system. So, um, it's just a shout out, which I think that is super important, that our librarians here, that we are proud of them. Um, so I have, I have a couple. So I wanna thank Emily for working so hard on her website page. It is amazing and outstanding, and, um, I know that was a lot of work, so thank you, really appreciate it. And also a shout out to Sammy Joe for being willing to work with our community. I wanna thank her for being so flexible with her programming so that we can all work together, so that we, we have a pretty busy community, so it helps that we're not overlapping, so that everybody can do all the things. So she's just really on top of getting stuff into the town's newsletter and just letting us know what's going on, so I appreciate that.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
I've noticed you guys in Fort Ben, I haven't done the air branch, it seems to be a continuing rotation stock of the free paperbacks, like I've ever come in twice where it's the same thing, and that's always nice to, just be able to grab a free book to stash in your car. That's appreciated.
Yeah. That's true, that's true for me too, yeah, there's always some, you know, always tilt my head like this. Yeah, grabbing.
So that's something that we wanna look at adding. To make us accountable too, to make sure that we're bringing those things to the table.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to add the good vibes to our, our monthly reports.
You have a second?
Listen.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thanks, lady.
Oh, thank you.
Director. Well, I, does anybody have a question?
Oh, circulation, sorry, certainly, sorry, that was, I, I was right ahead.
So this was.
Uh, no, I actually just forgot, so, um. When I was.
On the email.
On the email. How was the new Big Sandy person?
Um, good.
Uh, Sarah.
It's been good, we've had some emails and phone calls and.
Nice.
Getting a little chat with her when I was up there, so it's been good.
Hope we should do the statistics, or is it?
I'm not sure, actually, maybe it's a, as far as I know, it's a.
Yeah, it was Rachel's.
All right.
Or maybe.
Oh, and that's something we're gonna need to look at, because the job description will need to be adjusted a bit since the hours and.
Okay.
Things have changed, so I, I think the.
I take a look at that, that sounds great.
All right, any questions on? So. Okay, directors report. On September fourteenth, so two weeks ago, um, I had a call from Emily Hazen. She is the Equal Opportunity Specialist that's with the US Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. Um, so she reached out to me to talk about the complaint that was turned into them about the cat. And so this is the first step, the phone call from her to me was the first step in the process for the whole thing. Um, she said it's called the Rapid Resolution Process, that's, she has read through the complaint, she reaches out to me, she talks to me, had some questions, which I will cover, I will talk about that. And then she, uh, takes that back to her team to decide if they need to open an official investigation file into the matter. She said she was gonna call me that next week and she still has not called me back, so, um, I, yes, I mean, I guess I will reach out to her, but she made it sound like when she was ready for the next part, but she would let me know. Um, so she asked me what steps that we have taken in the library to make it the safest, most comfortable experience for everyone. So as soon as we got the cat, we posted signs at both entrances, we keep the carpets vacuumed, we dust the bookshelves, um, wipe down the books, which has already been in place on COVID, and still is in place, not because of COVID, but because sometimes we just get real gross stuff back, and so it's easier to just wipe down everything instead of saying, oh, is this dirty enough? No, okay, so we just, we wipe down everything. Um, the litter boxes are cleaned regularly, we wipe surfaces, uh, vacuuming and wiping down the blinds that are upstairs. We have let people know that we will put the cat in the office with the door shut if they want that, we will pull books for curbside delivery. Um, the door to the upstairs bathroom is always closed, so the cat is not in there, and the cat is never in the elevator, um, just in general, and then she wanted to know what other steps. We talked through some other steps we could take, so we talked about, um, keeping the door to the McLeish room, that door over there closed all the time, getting that cleaned out, well, so then programming that happens there would be as free of cat dinner as we can, so then from this door to the elevator, which does not have the cat in it, is a couple of steps, and then from the elevator to that door is also just a couple of steps, so exposure would be less, and then, um, she recommended looking into air purifiers, so I am waiting for her call back on that. Uh, the Community Conversations Program that we began in August, the first one was, I talked about that last month, and then, um, what we have called Table Talk One was held in September, we had a number of people attend that, we had a couple of teenagers come just because they wanted to, not because of extra credit or anything or class assignment. We have some people that came that normally maybe don't come to the library on a regular basis, um, they, everyone that was in attendance really enjoyed it and are looking forward to seeing how that turns out, the next one is scheduled for Tuesday, October tenth at five thirty, and everyone's invited. And then in November, Courtney Cowell will be here as part of that programming series from Humanities Montana to present local born news. Her, her program, her discussion focuses on local news and local food production, so on Monday, November thirteenth, we will have um, a panel with Bethany from the River Press, and then on Tuesday at noon, it will be an open presentation, um, about the food production part, I believe. Um, and then on Tuesday, September fifth, Danny and I went in to talk to commissioners as the board requested about the representation piece. Um, Danny presented the situation and the questions that we had about the representation, um, Bob Pasha asked if the commissioners were going to be able to make that final decision, and she said yes. Um, so he said, uh, what they have decided currently stand would be Highwood is Nancy Grossman, Geraldine is Danny England, Big Sandy is Nona Downruther, Fort Benton would be Kim Hibble, and the at-large is Janet Worrell. Um. Uh, we have been looking, we have found some old records over the last, um, week or so, two weeks, we've been going through some paperwork, and it actually historically has looked like there hasn't been an at-large per se, but the person has normally been from Southern Show County Carter Flowery, even though there's not a um, library or a branch there, that's, it just looking at the past, however many people, um, that's where they've been from, um. Danny also clarified with them that moving forward, the board needs to be very clear on which position is being filled, and also they do not have a copy of the signed bylaws, so that is something that will need to be done too. So I think was that, do you have anything else from then?
I completely forgot that, so I'm just gonna retouch base with you about that.
Does anybody have any questions, does anybody on the board have any questions?
About any of those things? Sounds good.
Okay. Um, and then in light of the meeting that we had on Monday and some different meetings we've had, Maren is gonna give, um, a fairly, I don't wanna say it super fast, but um, her presentation on the collection development and management process that she goes through of the, of the buying of the books. We will be, this is the one she presented in August, she will be presenting again in December, and at that point, there will be a chance, if you have more questions, not that you can't ask questions before that, but, um, in light of time and everything today, um, if you could write those questions down, maybe and, and ask.
Yeah, so, um, we had a request when the board, even before, um, we presented it to the public, uh, that we talked about it, thank you, uh, how we work out getting books and all of that, so I thought it would be easier just to address everyone at once, and if you wanna come back in December, we're talking anytime, but, okay, so first. We're gonna go through the process of publishing a book, because it's not just, I'm gonna write a book and my grandpa's is gonna send it out, and I'm gonna make a million dollars, and they don't read it, so it starts with the author, and then they go, hello, I wrote this book, please, please publish it, and the agent goes, am I going to make money from this? Because that's what my job is, to make money off this. So they look through it and they go, yeah, there's potential, or no, please stop, time to give us your manuscript, it's terrible. So then the agent takes it to the publisher that matches that book's intent and the audience, so it's, you know, there's some for just children, there's some for just young adult, there are some that are just abroad, like, I'm a random. Uh, publishers then go, will this make us money, or is this gonna be a waste of our time? And then they go, is this for children, is it for young adults, is it for adults, is it for babies? Let's go from there. So then the editors look through it, and they, they slice and dice the whole thing, they rip it apart, they go, this is inappropriate, this is inappropriate, you should add this, it's a long process. And they go, maybe, like, my, love Jean Austen, apparently, like, she was terrible at spelling and grammar, so like, her editor was always like, oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, why do I? You know, so it's a, it's a, you can be the best writer ever, and the editors are the ones who make it readable. Well, then, publishers or marketers, where they go, let's make this money. Um, Dog Man, this is for you, for kids, yeah, Schoolastic Book Fair, we're gonna publish, we're gonna push Dog Man, it's the best book ever. Um, and then, uh, publishers go to the reviewers who then, so like, Book List, Library Journal, Library Journal, Kirkus, uh, New York Times, that, uh, review. And they go through it and they go, here is my very long or short review. Um, some of them will be this long, well, and you have to read the whole review, and you go, I don't even know if I wanna read this stuff, or get this stuff, or what this review is talking about. Um, and then others are, they have a little thing at the end that says, get this for every library, or this is good for people who like this, awful, this, awful, this. So we go off of that. Um, and then the librarians are the ones who go and say, wow, this book aligns with our policy. Um, it's, it's not just, you know, this bathroom, the bookstore, and that looks good, that looks good, no, there's a lot of going into it and seeing. There aren't many reviews about this, and like, no one seems to know this about, maybe I'm not gonna get this book, or wow, this is one ten of words. I hope, hope our readers. I hope, hope our readers read it. And then it goes to the public, and then you go, I don't know if I'm gonna read this or not. And that's, that's where it ends, you either read it or you don't. Um, so it's not just. I'm gonna write a book and send it to whoever, I mean, that probably, but we'll get to that. Okay, here is the. Here's a chunk from the um latest edition of the collection development policy, last addressed in two thousand eighteen. So, um, these are all the things that we collect, so books, periodicals, newspapers. DVDs, audio books, um, we don't really get curriculum or textbooks. Um, we like to get large print, hardcover books are the primary choice. We do paperback, some are really great and others just fall apart. Um. Here's another one, so collection responsibilities and selection procedures, so like I just said. We look through different um professional magazines, we. We, we do our research, um. We listen to what public wants, we listen to what other librarians want. We find out, you know, what are, what are the best, what are the key themes at the schools, that sort of thing. Um. So. Then. Gifts, so we get a lot of people who are like, oh, here's a ton of books, so as soon as you give it to us, we can do with it whatever we want. We can put it in our collection, we can put it in another library, we can put it in a bookstore, if it's moldy, we're gonna throw it away. It's nothing personal, it's just moldy. Um. So when we go through, so maintenance is basically reading, making sure that. Books are, um, books on the shelf are. Books that are being read, books that aren't moldy, that happens so often, unfortunately. Um, if they're books that are even relevant to today, um, I mean. Yes, it was a fad ten years ago, but now no one really is into that, um. If we have an updated edition of something, it's, you know, so, um, or if we have like a bunch of copies of it. Um, if books are worn or damaged and we're not able to replace them. Then it's kind of, you know, how, how much can we fix this book or are we just gonna say? We can, we can interlibrary loan it, we can mark it on the library. So, time for vocabulary. So acquisitions is the active part where, or not active part, it's the part where. We go and actually acquire the books, so whichever um publisher I go through. By that time. Um, it's based on reviews, requests, interest, et cetera. Cataloging is when we have the book in our, in the building, I have it. I just need to make a record for it, not a record. I just need to add it to the library system. Um, it's also like, oh, this book is not what I thought it would be, I thought it would be for eight to twelve year olds. You know, uh, middle grade fiction, this is probably better for young adults, so I'm going to put it in the young adult section or. Wow, this is not a book for our library, I'm going to return it because that has happened, there was a book. Cause I was trying to update, uh, like the puberty books and I got one and I was like. Nope, nope, and my mom came in and she's like, what are you reading? And I'm like, you will never know because this is. Not anything, I mean, it's first, you know, so I mean, we, we, we don't just get books and go, well, we bought it. It's like, okay, this, we can return things. Um, and of course, there are times when we don't really know. I don't really know, like, ah, should I, should go in the kitchen, should go in the adult, there's a fine line. I'll have someone read it, tell me, oh, yeah, no, like, this is fine for the older kids in the children's section. Or no, teenagers should read, you know, this is more teen, so. And then genrefication, which is um deciding if we wanna put a sticker on it. Um. Sometimes we are, we put stickers, I mean, I, I've kind of left it to each branch to, to do whatever they want with it, um. Just cause they know what their patrons like, so. We have had requests for. Um, the sunshine stickers on books, either because people are like, I wanna avoid that, or those are the only books I wanna read. But I mean, we can't go super in depth because it hits a. Large print, Christmas, Christian, Western, set in space. That is five stickers, there's, no, we're gonna narrow it down to large print and probably Christmas. Um, so. Sometimes, and also there are times when we get books, someone will read it and go, um, this is about cowboys. Oh, okay, thanks, I had no idea. Thank you for letting me know. And then, so we don't always know, I mean, and there's always the chance of on page forty-seven, someone says. There, they have two dads. I'm not going to put a re- excuse you for that, that is, it's, if it's not like a part of the thought. It. And it's just not gonna be on there, okay. So who ultimately decides? I do. Normally it is the director's job, but Emily has said, please take this off my hands, I don't wanna do it, which makes sense because. After Sandra left, I took over and I was already familiar with all this stuff and so. Even though I tried to say, Emily, please, please, and she's like, no, no, I have enough things to do. Uh, which is fine, I, I really enjoy this, um. I, well, I, I take input from Emily Carolyn, Carolyn is so good at like mock Santa books and. Everything like that, and then we run some really random books that I've never even done, and it's great. Um, and of course, Darlene and Sammy Joe are one hundred percent involved, um. This is the la, this is the list from Big Sandy, so she, either she or Sarah. Will type in a, in a, um. The lot of books to the list. And if I can find it, as soon as I put it in the cart, I shut it off, and then. When they get it, they erase it from the sand. Um, and. Sammy Joe, same thing, she just adds. And whenever I add it to the cart, I check it off and she just keeps a running list, just. For fun, um, it doesn't matter either way, it's. Um. So, yeah, and then I take in patron suggestions and requests, I do what I can, so. Baker and Taylor is our number one vendor, um. So. This is where I go first for any book, so. Um, like, there's one series that has been requested and it is. Not available. I can get it on CD for thirty-two dollars. I can get it on audiobook for fifty-five dollars. The Cray for Black Edition is publisher out of stock, definitely, so I cannot put it. Um, I could get it on CD again over here for eighteen dollars. Those are my options for that specific book. Um, older books, even though, I mean, they're older, but even books that are published. Three years ago may not be available anymore, it's, I'm, I'm not a publisher, I don't. Um, but I check to see if there's, if it's hardcover, capable, you know. That's our primary thing, I check to see the price, um, Baker Taylor, we usually get a four percent discount, but the completion process changed. Um. And then Junior Library Guild. Um. Is a book subscription box that we get, so um, it's basically. I say, okay, I would like, um, middle grade graphic novels, so every month. Or five months, four years, whatever, they'll send me whatever's on their list for middle grade graphic novels. And they're all, um, they're all reviewed. Um, I can also just browse their catalog, um. Some of them, like, it'll tell me right here what edition it is. Uh, they tell me potentially sensitive areas, they tell, like, there's, sometimes there's, um. Like. Um, awards that it's won, um. So. There's. Junior Library Guild, uh, Land Rodeo is children's books. Um. Just. What's, whatever is just coming out, uh, McNaughton is our leasing program. Um. So newer books that I'm not sure if they're gonna last very long, so usually a level closer. Um, like celebrity memoirs, I try to get through McNaughton because. Someone probably won't care about. Whatever in three years, um, so we can just return these ones. Um, and I try to get like Daniel Steele from McNaughton, so. I can return them because we don't have space, or James Patterson, because we don't have space, so. Um. Or books about puberty that I'm not sure are going to be appropriate for the library, so then we can just return them easily. Um. And then SendGage Large Print is where we get large print adult books, uh, it's also a subscription program, so. Uh, every month I get a spreadsheet of. All the different books that we're going to expect in, um, whatever this is for December, so that way I can figure out. What I need to preorder for certain libraries depending on. What is coming, um, the problem with SendGage is we don't always get things in, you know, in a. Timely, timely manner, um, sometimes they just kind of show up whenever, um, we just got a book that was supposed to come in, hey, so. I mean, as long as we get it, um. So there's that. Oh, and we also go through, like, like Bronson Noble just had fifty percent off hardcover books, of course, we're gonna take that. Um, we get preview boxes from, like, publishers such as Smart Al Media, Abdallah Shalhara, it's all the same company, they just put differently on it. But we get to see why, I usually get, uh, junior, uh juvenile nonfiction. And it's like, should I spend forty dollars on this tiny book? Because that's how much. Nonfiction costs children. Okay, frequently asked questions, we're gonna start with easy ones, okay, why not Amazon? Forever we used Amazon for uh books, um, as soon as. I could, we stopped ordering from Amazon, um. Mostly because items are not necessarily cost efficient and sometimes it'll say brand new, but it's like. Brand new from the library's. Discord sale, so it has all this stuff on it and it's, we're not gonna, we don't wanna be a battered copy. Um, but most importantly, the library no longer has a business account with Amazon. So instead of paying with an invoice like we used to, we have, we're gonna have to use a credit card, which we try to use for other events. Okay. I've requested a book multiple times and we still don't have it, why? Well, um. If it's in paperback, I'm probably not gonna get it, um, unless, you know, it's. Colin Hoover or whatever, um, but it, it, it might be out of print, like, there's no possible way I'm gonna get it unless I go thrifting. Um, or it's like the uh Oppenheimer book that. We could only get in paperback because the hardcover version is fifty-five dollars, not going to do that, um. Return on investment, is it worth getting? Will other people check it out? So if it has historical significance. Is it part of a larger series that we will have to invest in? So if you request number thirteen in a series. Do we have one through twelve? Do we have any of them? Should we get one through twelve? Um, it's, it's not just, I don't like you, so we're not gonna get it, so that's, that's not it at all. Um, and sometimes I did order it, it's just coming, um, or they canceled it and they didn't tell me, which. Happens. Okay, harder questions. Why can't my branch of the library order books? Um, because. So we can be a cohesive system and maintain the budget, it's easy, it, it just, it's a centralized, uh. Process. Also, it's very unusual for branches to collect their own books and, and put them in. Um, there's a. Sort of Vancouver, Hoover, uh, Public Library, it's all over Washington. One main branch collects it, uh, does acquisitions, does cataloging, and they just send it up. Um, and so I know that, you know, there's a lot of what we used to, but we haven't. For a long time, for at least six years, um, so. We're, we're trying to be as cohesive as possible, plus I take every possible suggestion. From uh Sammy Joe and Darlene and whatever they want, and if something's unavailable, I let them know. I, or I just say. Like, no news is bad, you know, like, I, either I can get it or I can't.
And that probably also eliminates Curcus.
Yes, yes, so I, yeah, cause especially with the large print books, when we can't really. Depend on when they're gonna come in, you know, it's like, I don't wanna get. Of, I don't wanna order three of them. Or even two of them if we're gonna get the large print, um. I donated a book that I or my grandma or a local wrote, why don't you have it in the collection? This is a cataloging issue, um, so there's this thing called a record and records are really hard to create, um. I don't have a background in record making, it is hard, I'm going to show you an example, um. I can do my very best and then, uh, to, uh, make one. And then I have to send it to people at the state. So they can say, this is okay, or you need to not do this anymore, um, so here is a. Record, I actually was able to make four of book written by Big Sandy, so this is. I have, there's all of this stuff, um. There's different tags, there's different fields, um, if you use a dollar sign instead of a. Uh. Number sign, it's a whole thing, like, it's, it's coding essentially, and I, yeah, it's.
Very specialized.
It's very specialized, um. So it's, it's not that we're like, oh, you can't, whatever, it's, yeah. Okay, here are the really hard questions. Why are there so many books I don't like? My taxpayer money is being wasted. Well, everyone pays taxes that go towards funding things we may not agree on or even utilize. I certainly don't use most of the roads in Churk County, yet my taxes go to it, um, we also. Talked to Hannah at the Courthouse, and she says it's about twenty dollars per household for the library for the year. Um. The library is for everyone, um, you may say. And it has been said, um, well, my kids don't read that, other kids do, um. When I first started, uh, five years ago, there was a kid who was about eight. And they were like, I just wanna read all the books with the rainbow secrets on it, but we had. Started implementing because we did a survey of high school, and I thought that's what they wanted. And so this child was going to the young adult section, cause that's the only place she could find them. And I kept saying, those are, those are for older kids. And she's like, yeah, but that's the only, so I started pushing to get books for children. That are age appropriate about LGBTQ stuff, so yes, I have been pushing this. So yes, I have been pushing this. So it's, it's so that the kids who actually need it have an age appropriate. To look at, it's not because I'm trying to turn every child gay or whatever. It's because there are gay children and they want to read this, and it's. Only fair that they should have something at their reading level. Because we all know, young adult stuff is really racist, I don't write it, I don't publish it. All right, um. Also, if books don't get checked out, they get weeded, so if you don't like a book, continue to not check it out. Cause then. If, if it's not used within the last three years, we get rid of it, unless it's historically significant, it's classic. X, Y, Z, um, why shouldn't that taxpayers, tax dollars pay for access to offensive materials? So this is from the Lucin Park Library, um. Way back in two thousand and seven. Taxes support free inquiry that allows citizens to inform themselves so they can fully participate in our democracy. We are a diverse society and what offends one enlightens another. Moreover, citizens have long found it wise to remain informed about opinions and ideas they oppose. The free marketplace of ideas cannot be partitioned and still function. Even more, why doesn't the library protect children from offensive materials, whether or not it is legally obscene? The primary responsibility of rearing children rests with the parents. If. If, if. But I don't know what else to say, um, we, we cannot be their parents, we cannot possibly know. What each individual household is going to. Value more than. Other things, like. If, if we suggest a book for kids because we think they're gonna like it, not because we're like. We're evil, whatever.
But like my son and snakes.
Right.
Loves, loves, loves snakes.
Yeah, but then there's the time that you picked out a book for him, and you were like, what is this?
Yeah. They've killed a snake in the sun.
Yes. All right. How do I guide my child when I can't be with him twenty-four hours a day? Um, once again, this is from Lucy Clark Library, parents who believe that the current state of society and communications make it difficult to shelter their children. Let's nevertheless find a way to cope with what they see as a reality within the context of their own family. We are not authorized to act as a parent. Um. If you are offended by any materials. Emily is the person. To talk to. Before anyone else, you can talk to me, you can talk to Carolyn, that's fine, Emily. Is the one you want to talk to, you can talk to at the library, you can email her. Or if you don't like talking to people like me. You can fill out the form uh that has been recently updated, I believe. Back to our policy. Shortly, how many citizens' concerns about the library will be referred to the director? Who will attempt to resolve concerns informally, but that is not possible, the citizen will be invited to fill out and return a written and signed reconsideration form. In the absence of completed form, there is no complaint and no action will be taken.
That person, yes. It's okay, you're doing great.
Once again, this is from the, wait, the one that has passed one, the past one, so it may have changed. Come back in December, um. So there's, I'll just take. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call, talk to me, um, you can email me. You can write an email letter, um, I'll add it to my pile, you can um call me, you can come to the office. Where I'm usually hiding, so.
If you, if you do have just a follow up, to make sure I understood correctly, that the origin of the rainbow stickers was there, you're pressed from the Fort Ben School System.
Yes.
To label.
So in two thousand and nineteen, we, or two thousand and eighteen. We were trying to get high schoolers to be more involved with the library, and so we did a survey. And those who answered said, we would like to see more representation of LGBTQ characters, authors, um. Illustrator stories, whatever.
So it wasn't labeling on its acquisition. Okay, so that, that one acquisition.
Right, and then so.
At that point, you just started collecting YA.
We, we did, yes, we started collecting those ones, and any of the ones that we had already had, um, we put stickers on them.
Okay.
And, and the, the teenagers who have come in and seen that have been very appreciative.
So after you had the YA collection, you started noticing there was younger children also searching for the same material, and it sounds like you thought that was more like, it was a, not quite a safety issue, but like. We have books, but this isn't really appropriate for you.
Right, right, I don't, I don't.
So at that point, you got age appropriate because there was kids looking for rainbow stickers no matter what?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's, that's society, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
I'm going to.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Mary. You're done, yay. All right, announcements and needs to remember. Uh, so Monday, October ninth, all branches will be closed. Observance of Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. The next table talk is. Five thirty on Tuesday, October tenth. And then the Pathfinder, Regional Pathfinder meeting is Thursday, October twenty-sixth here, um, for Ben. Uh, which the friends will be. Um, providing lunch for that day.
Now that we have friends.
Do you think you'll do the request for the service to salad again?
Yes. No, so they're gonna be providing everything.
Everything, and then the money that we have will be able to do like the morning pastry coffee things and.
Okay.
And that, so.
Wow, making it easier on the sport number.
Yeah.
All right, unfinished business. So general housekeeping. General housekeeping, um, so we just wanted to go over a reminder update on the socials. Where we can kind of put a little bit of that confusion. Uh, to rest, the Fort Ben branch has one Facebook account and one Instagram account. The Geraldine branch has one Facebook account. The Big Sandy branch has one Facebook account, one Instagram account, and one TikTok account. If you need to know, um, the handles for those handles, is that what I'm supposed to call? Them, is that what they are? Um. Talk to our director, and she will be able to guide you to the right page for that.
That isn't, we don't have that, that would be, all right.
Um, please follow and like. I think I'm supposed to say that after any social texts. Um. And then one more thing, I'm just going to read this, I didn't remember it, um. The board at the last trustee meeting moved the petition signers, please use the reconsideration form we have now updated and adopted. This will also work for everyone else who has written a letter with a concern. It is available at all of our branches and on our website, please address your concerns first to our director. This has been an action that the board has taken. We have read the petition and every other letter that has come across our desk. We have heard each and every one of you. We have been and will continue to work on policies helping our libraries. Going forward, the petition will not be on our agenda anymore, I want to take a minute to bring. Uh, to light that it is so wonderful that we have a whole community, every single one of us that have shown up to all these meetings. That is so passionate about our libraries. It warms my heart, so we truly thank you. And that's all I had for general housekeeping. Want to pause, please.
No, no, that's just two.
Thank you. So guideline for commenters during public meetings, guidelines for commenters during public meetings.
Um, so this was the one we had the first reading at, at the last. We did that first, and then I think we made a couple changes.
Yeah.
It was not a lot, so this will be the second reading, and then we'll forward that to this point.
On this today?
We can, we can, we can, we don't have to. But we can. I think we just took out, commenters can only speak once during the meeting. Because since we're doing the each agenda item, they can speak.
All right.
Yeah, I move that we accept this. Guidelines for commenting during Zoom meetings as a policy.
May I have a second? Oh, I favor say I.
I.
All of those same sign. Move some carries. All right, and then the Zoom board meeting policy is the next one. Um, so I was tidying this one up yesterday, I did have some. And I think this is the first, I believe so, so we can, we did it at committee, all right.
Well, no, we can't do it. No, no, so we should come to the committee with this first.
Okay, perfect.
So the gutter project is to address ice on the sidewalk in front of Big Sandy?
Yes.
We looked at it, or I wasn't there, but number one we're there, and he's gonna put new gutters. Um, but there's a little bit left on the tiny roof, there's a, I, and he's gonna leave it, and then we're gonna see how that goes. But we're gonna try this first, cause you know, he has seamless, he's a seamless gutter guy. And so he knows how to do it, and so, yeah, he was over there, and he just moved back home, so, yeah. So for a hundred and fifty dollars.
So is that gonna move it? To the other side of that little doorway? It's. So when you walk through the outside doorway, it's like just the metal, you're walking through the metal.
That goes across.
Yeah, that goes above that doorway and down.
I think so, Danny, I can't remember.
But yeah.
Instead of going to the front gutter.
Yes, it's gonna go and take it to that, yeah. Which there's no basement in the other building, so we shouldn't need to worry about water pooling there.
And there is something in the back that I don't know, Darlene, I wasn't there, but they may want another gutter thing changed in the back, back.
Yeah.
Because it's good.
And maybe a load of gravel.
See, well, it's the load of gravel that apparently we've been waiting on.
So, so you want, so we ordered that?
Well, I mean, that was the top, well, correct, I mean, right, that's what I.
And the county should supply that.
Right, and so it's waiting, like, they have to have an extra load that they can stop and dump or something.
Okay.
I, I think, I think this is a great start.
Well, that's what, if it, and if it doesn't work.
Then we'll go to step.
But you say the pressure from that.
Yeah, I said there is a little roof. That will still go to that one that runs to the front, but it won't be the whole nine yards like it was before, yeah, so.
No, I think it's a great idea, it was really nice to go see it. And have explained to me, oh, cause when you guys were there, it's up there Monday, and I was like, okay, now I can visualize this. It was really helpful.
Yeah, and he's, 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 he's a nice man, and he'll do a good job.
Okay, and on the other page is that the gutter, it's the door, I.
Yeah.
I really wanna do one, oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let's just do it. May I have, yeah, may I have?
I, I'll make the motion that we use the seamless. Cutter guy to supply and install the dump. Spouts for a hundred and fifty dollars.
One second, all in favors, say I.
I.
All of those same sign.
His name is Jamesy.
Yeah. Thank you, how soon can you do it?
Um, well, I, I told him we wanted it done for winter.
Okay, great, perfect.
Yeah, whenever. That's awesome, whenever that is.
And can you, if we don't see it in the next week, let's maybe check in with them?
Yeah, yes, I will, I'll keep, I'll keep them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go down.
And then the other page is actually for the doors.
Yes, and, well, I, it's, I didn't bring it last meeting or something, so he just needs to. Get those, those mechanisms, because him and Darlene have been messing with it, and he did something. And he screwed that one up again, so he had to come, Darlene knows how to fix it, so, uh, so this will. Hopefully.
So, yeah, so I was. In the Big Sandy project, okay, and one of the things that they did to cut the price of the, of the bid, because it was getting so high. Five hundred thousand, um, they took out the squares. That were going to be, instead of the full carpet, they took out the skylights that were above that inter. Entrance that was skylights there, and the other thing, they didn't put in as good a door as they should have.
Yeah, but she thinks, yeah, they think maybe if we just.
So if they would just, yeah.
More windows.
Yeah, all the doors will work better. Yeah.
And it was more the mechanism than anything.
This is expensive, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And these are the two front doors.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the door.
The, the back door.
No, yeah, the back doors, this is the one that opens, so it's handicapped.
Yeah.
And then you go through to the, you go to the walkway, and then. And that door is handicapped too, like, yeah, yeah, so it'll, it'll be the same type of thing.
I don't know if it's spoken well.
And I can, and I will call him, I can call him tonight and say, get him ordered if, if you want, cause, you know, it should have been. Last month, but.
Hey, do you wanna? Make a motion on that?
I make a motion, we have, uh. Randy, general services, fix the doors, order the materials for. Doors of Big Sandy.
No, that's my second, all in favors, say I.
Hi.
All of those same sign.
Get those babies ordered.
Thank you.
You know, yeah. I'll call Jamesy too.
So where's the gravel go? I mean, Darlene knows exactly where, where they park the bars. Did Darlene order it? No, my understanding, it's just, it's not enough to do its own individual thing, which makes sense. So becoming is aware.
I don't know.
I'll call Darlene.
Darlene and I'll call.
Great, yeah. Darling about it and see, yeah, has to be what she's done on it, so we're not redoing.
So basically, when they have a gravel project, they'll dump a load there.
Or a half a load.
I mean, the last thing, I don't think it's gonna be a full load.
Yeah, like, that's so.
Well, I like gravel, maybe.
Yeah, we'll split, have it have.
How can you, how can you?
It's like real like gravel. Sure, we can stick it somewhere down. Yeah. Okay, good. Yep. All right, new beginning. No question. And onto public comment then.
I'll make some comments, we're gonna be up soon. We'll be talking another. He's a popular face in this community. Um. I just had a couple things that I was jotting down, how many minutes do I have?
Two.
Three.
Okay, I was just noticing through the presentation, I just first of all, wanted to say, Danny, as far as. Um, I think your board is operating better at the board, we had a meeting, and Danny orchestrated that to meet with Emily.
And Danny orchestrated that to meet with Emily as a petition writers. I thought it was excellent. I don't know what this is, you thought, I thought it was excellent, so it was very, yeah. And I think that was a very positive, good vibe. Moment, and I just wanna give her credit for, I think, for an excellent chair, and I think this is. Operating more as they should, and I'm super thankful for that. Um. We talked about the petition, I just want you all folks to know, we're not upset about the table in the petition. We think it's fine. We're moving on in a different, in a different way, the petition obviously. Made angst go up. And that was never really the intention. But it was the intention to be heard, and I think the petition definitely served its purpose in that. And, um, I'm not. Regretful in doing it, I think it was still a positive thing because we are here today. Because of that petition. We're here at this spot, with this table, or with this board right now, because of that. So I, I think that was a good thing. Um. I just noticed one thing I wanted to say about the cat, that seems like an awful lot of work. That seems like we could put our energies for something else, that's just something that stood out to me, I was like, man. To clean everything and vacuum and, I mean, I know you have to clean anyways, but I'm sure you're cleaning more than you should be. I was just making note of that, I was like, hell, that seems like a lot of time that could be used otherwise. Um. I had a question about the ALA, Montana broke away from the ALA. I understand that. Specific libraries can still subscribe within the state on their own, and I would like to ask if this library should subscribe to the ALA. Um. I may be wrong about that understanding, but I would just like some clarification. Um. I also. Um. Through the collection process, I'm so glad I was here, I didn't know she was doing that, but. I'm glad I got to hear that. I would like, I wish you would care, or I'll ask her, but it seems like. Your books are gonna be pushed that have the most money behind them. And because obviously Baker and Taylor has a lot of money, they have a lot of. Um, publishers underneath them, any sort of group that wants to promote those books is gonna finance those books to be promoted to your libraries. And I just want the board to think about is that what we want to push our funds to, do we want? Um, the most popular per se, or should we look at smaller publishers? There's a lot of private publishers, smaller publishers that you can buy brand new books from that are good books. Um, especially concerning Darlene or Sammy Joe, it seems like she thought duplicates could be purchased. But it seems like if they are in communication with one another, that wouldn't be an issue. And that each branch, since they have a budget for buying books, could buy what is necessary for their patrons. And then have a list, you could collaborate and share those books, but you're still catering to your community better. In that, in this, so that's just what I had a thought of concerning the collection. Um.
All right, Michelle.
Am I done?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um. Whatever happened with the library collection overview committee that was going to, if that's the correct, I'm a pleasure. That. You guys were going to put together a committee to review the books. So that you didn't have to.
That's only if a form is filled out. That, that's when a form is filled out, when the reconsideration form is filled out, then we would set that up.
Okay, so the collect, the, the appointment of that committee, where is that?
I, I haven't seen.
With the gel.
Correct.
Yeah, it won't happen until we get it.
Until we get a.
Consideration.
Okay. Great question. Can you run out?
I missed that.